Okay, I think at this point if David could let her join the group.
I think I can.
Okay.
Let me take a couple of seconds and she should pop over.
There she is.
Hang on just a second, let me unmute your microphone.
Mike, can I ask Frank a question?
Yes.
Frank, just for clarification. The agenda tonight says. We're an application for review of submission requirements for the existing Lincolnville motel to establish a documented site plan for a grandfathered commercial site. Does the Lincolnville motel have a commercial site plan approved?
It does not.
Does not. So what does grandfather mean?
Unless it's the same as when we did Viking lumber. Viking lumber did not have a commercial site plan, so they wanted to add a paint room. So we went through the same process. They had to become a documented commercial site. So in other words, again, you can't have an amendment unless you have a commercial site. A grandfathered site is not acknowledged as a site that you can make an amendment to.
So we are going through a commercial site and approval for Lincolnville motel.
Right, and it is as it is. We're not going to ask them to change anything. It's going to be approved as it's grandfathered.
Before we continue, let's welcome Alice has just joined us now. Hi, Alice.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Hi, Alice. We're, we're just starting on your application here. So Frank, we have a, we have a grandfather business that was probably there before the town had any kind of zoning or anything. Is that correct?
It was probably before Rosie Gary, yes.
And I'm a little confused over the, it's a lodging business, is that correct?
Right.
And, and the only, the only change is she, she would like to be able to serve some takeout food certain times of the day, so people will be able to get something to eat.
That's great.
Without leaving the, the site if they want it.
Right, and if you look at the, the flat, the flat plan she's got on there, you can see that it's just a small window that she's putting in place. The kitchen exists already, and so there's no change, anything except cutting a hole and letting people pick out food there.
The window is actually already there.
What's that?
The window is even already there. All, all I'm asking you to do is be able to, to, in addition to having a lodging business, be able to serve food from this site. And for, and for the site plan to be, to be recognized by the town of Lincolnville.
Okay, so being that the business is considered lodging and the state, the state statute defines lodging as hotels, motels, bed and breakfast, anything like that. A number of these places already serve maybe a continental breakfast, coffee and bagels and things. Is it, is that a, I don't. Is that an activity that would normally be, you know, already accepted with a business like this? Or, or is this an actual change if she's just not doing part of what, what normal lodging is? I guess that's my only question. Are we?
I think the question you're asking, Mike, is what did she have before as far as feeding food was concerned? So now, did you have?
Is, is that part of lodging, whether she does it or not?
As, as I understand it, um, I'm, I'm currently licensed by the state as strictly a lodging license. So in order for me to apply for any food service, it, it becomes a different, it's a different license. You become an eating place or perhaps a bed and breakfast, but it's, it's a change as opposed to what I currently have, which is strictly a lodging license.
Okay.
Can I make a point on?
Yes, go ahead.
This, this, the planning board is reviewing a commercial site plan application. The business that occurs on that site, once the site has been approved for the business, is up to the business person. I don't think we need to talk about what kind of business she's going to have, if she's going to have food with. In fact, I'm wondering.
We're not making, we're not making a commercial site approval for the, for the food business at this point. We're making.
We don't have a commercial site approval. Listen, we're, we're approving a commercial site plan. Why can't we incorporate the food thing into the plan application and approve it all?
Yeah, that was kind of what I was thinking too.
I don't, you can't have an amendment to a non-existing plan. So if we approve this plan and part of that plan is to serve food through a window, that's part of the plan. We, we approve it.
You approve it? Great.
That wasn't a final approval, I'm sorry.
Well, you, you've submitted quite a bit of, you've submitted quite a bit of information here with the, you know, with the survey plan. There's all the existing buildings and septic and everything that goes on there. I just don't want to overevaluate the whole plan. If it's something that normally would, would be done with a business like this. And it, I mean, what, what are the feelings of the other members here?
Uh, this is Scott. I own the Duck Trap motel, my wife and I. Yeah, currently, we don't, we don't serve food, but it was my understanding that in the 50s, when this place was built, they had a kitchen and a dining room. You know, I don't see any problem with her serving food. Yeah, I don't, I don't even see that that would, that would have to be an issue.
I think the only point that I heard is that she has to get a separate license to do what she's requesting to do.
Yeah, you have to get a license from the food, you know.
Yeah.
Department.
And there go, and there go, that's not a part of the grandfathered commercial site.
No.
It's a, it's a change to the grandfathered site.
Yeah.
Uh, this is Janice. How is it a change to the grandfathered site if in previous years in the 50s or whenever they?
That was my place. That was the Duck Trap motel, not the Lincolnville motel. Lincolnville motel is, when it was, before it was the Lincolnville motel, it was something else, but they never served food there.
Yeah, apparently before the Lincolnville motel, it was the Addington motel, but prior to that, it was on the Waters Edge motel. And it has recently come to my knowledge that at that point, there was a restaurant. There was actually two people who stopped by this weekend who were talking about eating blueberry pancakes and such here. So I believe that there is a precedent precedent for this location to have had food service. But, you know, it's been my business now for five years. I bought the property in 2015. And in trying to, you know, change, you know, what I'm doing here, I do just want to make sure that I'm compliant and, you know, not, not doing anything out of, out of the ordinary and to have this site plan registered so that if there are other changes I would like to make in the future, that, you know, it is on file with the town of Lincolnville so that this process can be expedited going forward.
Well, this is Janice. It seems to me that it was there previously as a restaurant. And if you have the proper licenses from the state food. I forget the term. I mean, as long as you don't sell alcohol, you know, I mean, then that's a whole nother story. But since it's just a takeout window and people aren't coming inside and, you know, this is a pandemic, let's just give this woman a chance.
Thank you.
Well, I, I'm looking at, I don't know if any of you have the ordinance in mind, but looking at page 46 where it outlines activities requiring site plan review. And keeping in mind, it's already an existing. The only item I saw on that. Item A, the conversion of an existing non-residential use in whole or part to another non-residential use. You know, if she were changing it from an inn to a restaurant, I can see that, that requiring site plan review. I guess I'm, I'm not 100% convinced that she needs approval from the board to. To continue or to start again, something that's normal to the, to the, to lodging in the state. What are the other, what are the other board members thinking? What do you think, Frank?
I'd like to hear the board members first.
Yeah, I, I can go along with what Mike says on the conversion of existing non-residential use, but that goes along with the food service being proposed. What we're doing here is we're approving or not approving an application for a commercial site. That site is an existing motel. If that motel has a service of food through a window and breakfast, we will be approving that whole site for that operation. If there's a problem with the state in serving food through the window at a motel, that's the owner's problem, not our problem. We're looking at the site and what we will be reviewing is the standards for the site and whatever occurs or is proposed to be occurring on that site.
But tell me, Alice, do you serve food inside at all?
I currently do not serve any food whatsoever. I give away coffee to the people. But, you know, my, my understanding, and we've had conversations over the course of the last five years about this. And this has always kind of been part of my intent with the property. I used to work as a professional chef. In New York City before I moved back to Maine in 2013. And I have always had the understanding that I needed additional approval in order to be able to change the business from exactly what it was. So I've been trying to be very by the book about it. And so, you know, had Gert Lindorski drop this whole site plan, everything like that, to make sure that, you know, I'm doing the right thing. You know, within the, the limits of the town and whatever, you know, might, might be required of me. So there's no food currently served. What I would love to be able to do is to do it. And the takeout window, because it's already an existing window, has been the plan even pre-pandemic. And it actually works, you know, very well for the current situation that we're living in. But the hope is that, you know, people could come to the window, be able to get a little bit of breakfast, take back to the deck of their own cabin or to sit on the deck. Um, that is part of the building now and, you know, just have, have some food or maybe after they check in in the evening, you know, get a little of a snack or something like that. I'm trying to find as many possible ways to increase the revenue of the property because right now bookings aren't looking as good as they normally do.
So, yeah, so the position that the state took when you approached them and explained what you're doing. Was that for you to be able to use that window for food, you required a separate license, which was a change of use to what you're doing.
The state requires a separate license if you're serving food, certainly. Um, but my understanding based on our conversations was I should start with the town before starting with the state. Um, so when I get my regular inspections from the health department, as I do as a holder of a lodging license. Um, I've had a commercial kitchen built since 2016, but have not used it for any other purposes aside from myself and.
So did, did the state indicate then if the town approved it, that it was not a change of use, that they would not consider a change of use? Well, you would still need to have the license regardless of what the town said.
You, you still need to have a license to serve food. Um, you know, if you're, if you're a food service business, the criteria is just a little bit different for a lodging license. I mean, I've been serve safe certified since, you know, 2008 or something. Um, but you, you know, that you, you need to have local permission so that you can make sure that when the state grants you a license, that it's, you know, it's, it's not an issue.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jay.
Go ahead, Jay.
A few years ago, we had an application for a store in Lincolnville Beach. It was a novelty souvenir store. And she wanted to install a small counter in the back of that store and serve coffee and sweets from that counter for the customers who came in for her store. It was found that that store did not have a commercial site plan approval from the town. So that store went through a complete, complete commercial site plan review. At the end of the review, the site plan was approved. Along with that went the approval for the counter in the back with the food. So if we, if we put this application for this motel, which doesn't have a commercial site plan approval, through the complete process and the board votes to approve the commercial site. Whatever occurs on that site will be approved by the board or state licensed people, you know, that's in their bailiwick. But in my opinion, if we include the service she's proposing, and she already has a kitchen on site that's built there, so we know that that's all in place. And along with the fire restrictions and everything else that go on with it. Once that site is approved, she can do with that site what she wants. It's approved.
No, I, I have, I have to stop you there. She can't do with what she wants, Jay. The point you're looking at here is right now, it does not have any food at all. And so therefore, it's with simplicity, we would take and review it and approve it as it is. Now, we, we can't approve it, an amendment to it, for the commercial site plan.
So you're saying we have to go through a complete commercial site plan review process, approve the Lincolnville motel as a commercial site and then amend that approval?
Oh, that's, it's an amendment to an existing commercial site. This is the same thing that we did with, with Viking lumber, exactly the same. The same thing you did with that little store beside the, across from the. She does not have that facility in there now, so that's not a grandfathered thing that you're doing. It's not there.
So you'd be, you'd be. No, I, I understand it, it's not there, but, I mean, if she were a bed and breakfast who for years had never served coffee and bagels and donuts in the morning. And all of a sudden started to do that. It, it's not really a change of user. Um, and it certainly fits under the definition of a, of lodging, which is what the business is. That, that was my only question. It seemed to me like that is part of, of the lodging business. I, I, I don't know that Frank absolutely agrees with that, that, you know, the other members of the board can make their own decision, but that's, that's my gut feeling.
This is, I, I think that because her food is for sale, Mike. I mean, in the lodging, it's a B and B and they give you breakfast, part of the price, but she's not doing that. Is that what you're saying, Frank?
Yes, yes, it doesn't exist today. Just the fact that the state says, go ahead and get the town's approval or not. But it doesn't matter from the state when it comes to the fact that she needs a license to do something that she's not doing today. That's a cutting point. Board is comfortable, and I hear what you're saying, it's a net, what she's doing. I'm just hanging my hat when somebody looks at this down the line, they say, well, why did she need a separate instance and how could that have been grandfathered? It's a license that exists. You can't grandfather what isn't there. But if you're comfortable with it, I'll be quiet, I think.
Would it be any advantage to her down the line to have an approved commercial site?
Absolutely. Because what you're saying, okay, what you're saying is that with, what she's going to that motel is such a net. She doesn't even have to come before the board to become a grandfathered commercial site. She can continue doing it as she is. That's what I'm hearing. Without going forward through this tonight.
Frank, could you explain that again, what you just said?
I don't think I could. My wife kicked me in the shins when I said that. No. What, what, what I said was sometime down the line, if somebody looks at it and they say that this was an approved grandfathered site. Well, how could you have approved something that wasn't there as grandfathered?
But it was there. It, many, many years.
No, it's not there. No, no, there was never in the facility where she is, as I understand, food logic. It was another building, which part of the complex down by the water.
Oh, I see.
Is that correct, Alice?
Uh, to my, there is, there is no record of exactly what happened. Um, I was speaking with a potential guest this morning and he seemed to describe something similar to a food service business in one of the current existing buildings. But I've tried to check with the historical society in Lincolnville with the library to try and find more information about the previous, you know, sort of past of the motel, when I bought the property. And there isn't any information about this. So I think for me, the best possible scenario would be to get the site plan recognized as, as it is. And, you know, to know that, you know, I've expressed, you know, good faith and intention in being able to, you know, develop this property as a lodging place that serves food. Um, you know, I just, I don't want to try to start funding a new element of a business that, um, you know, could potentially get shut down for not doing the right thing. Um, you know, it's a visible property right in Route One. I'm not trying to cut any corners or anything like that. So, um, you know, I've invested probably $4,000 in this process between getting the site plans made and all the copies and everything like that. So, you know, for me, I'd really just like permission to be able to serve food out of the things that I already have. But I don't want to do the wrong thing, obviously.
The, Mike, the application the plan has before is the project location to view the proposed uses, commercial site recognition. And the project description is to add a takeout window for morning, afternoon food and drink service to existing motel. Change of use from lodging only to eating and lodging. Only construction is to build an eight by six deck. So this application is really for the, the serving of the food, if I'm reading the application correct. What we're doing is reviewing this site for commercial site plan approval, which includes the entire motel.
There is, there's nothing on record, oh, for the motel, so.
Yeah, that's what you're doing, is you're getting this site approved by the town of Lincolnville under the commercial site plan ordinance, correct?
Yes.
That's what you're after, is an approved site plan.
Yes.
That has to be for the motel, not for the eight by six deck you're adding to it for the food service.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So if the kitchen that exists is going to make food and push it out through a window that already exists to an eight by six deck that's proposed. And we approve the entire site by going through commercial site plan ordinance review, it's approved. The history, the history is irrelevant. What she's going to be doing there is kind of irrelevant. We're approving the site. Traffic flow, pedestrian flow, buffering, all those things that go along with approving the site. And we keep talking about this food service and that's not what we're going to be doing by the application.
I, I would tend to agree with that, Jake.
Okay, that was my point.
So what, what, what would the board like to do here?
I'd like to go through the commercial site plan approval process.
So would, so would I. I think that's the correct way to do it. I agree with Jake. Nobody think.
Well, I don't agree.
Well, I do know, once we get into these commercial site plan reviews, they get, they get quite detailed and lengthy. And I think with what's submitted, there's going to have to be some additional. I mean, a lot of the things are, are drawn on the existing survey. We, we need a drawing that's got a signature block. We'd have to vote on it. There's a lot that goes into it. We can, I mean, Frank can guide you on what the list of, you know, submittals would be, if that's the way we're going to go with this.
That's what she's asking for, right?
That's, that's what she's asking for, yeah.
Well, she's, she's asking for it because she's a chef from New York and that's how they do things there. You know, this is Lincolnville and. It's a takeout window for a few people, not the whole town of Camden and Belfast coming through her window. Maybe a few extra people will stop by for a sandwich or a coffee, but. It's just a small business. Acting on and getting approval from the state beverage, state food service. I forget what that's called. I should know, I had a restaurant. It's, it's not, it should not be a site plan situation going through all of that. More expense to her. Look all this, what she's done. She's showing us.
Janice.
Nothing.
Janice. She's asking for a commercial site plan review. That's what she wants.
She wants it because she thinks it's the right thing to do.
It is the right thing to do.
Well, that's your opinion.
So you don't think you need to do this?
No, I don't. I think this should be approved and move on.
Okay, so Frank, let me ask Frank a question. Frank, if she applied just to do the food service with the eight by six additional deck, would that require a full commercial site plan review?
Yes.
There you go, Janice.
The deck?
Yep. Yes, Janice, only because if it doesn't exist, I can make an amendment to it. Right now, there's nothing on, there's nothing on file that says it even exists.
All right, what if she doesn't have a deck and it's just a walk-up window? Would she still have to go through the site plan?
If, if you're considering, she's making food available, which the state says, I need to give, you need to have a license to make food available. She merely pointed, forget the deck. What she's saying, the deck is something that, yes, they can walk up to the dirt or the stone and take the food out of the window. But she's saying, I want to make it more comfortable so people have a deck they can walk up onto. And makes, it just makes it nicer for the environment, but forget the deck, that, that buddies the water. The thing is.
I'm sorry.
The thing is, she's asking for this because if, believe it or not, you probably would, you've been, yourself. This gives her a comfort factor that I have got documented who I am, what I am. And if you want to challenge it, I have a signature of five people on here from the town officials that says, I am okay to do what I'm doing. You can't shut me down. So it's, it's a security blanket, really. Would, you agree with that, Alice?
Uh, yeah, I mean, the, the, the deck is in, like, in an inconsequential part of it. It just makes it so that people, you know, under six foot four can reach the window. Um, it's, you know, simply necessary for that part, but, um, I, you know, I'm just hoping to, you know, do this in the easiest way to be compliant. And I hope that I have provided all of the materials should we need to do the full commercial site plan review so that you have them for you. Because I, I think that it's hopefully relatively straightforward at this point. I mean, you know, they made a really nice drawing of the property. I dropped off all the packets at the beginning of March before this whole crisis hit. So I think all of the information is there and to the best of my ability, I've been trying to, you know, make it so that this can be a relatively straightforward process. Because in all honesty, it is a really minor change to a business that's been around for a long time.
The bottom, bottom line, Janice, a citizen has come to the town that says, I want to make my business legal. So if a citizen comes to the town and she's gone to all this expense, then we have to acknowledge and, and satisfy that request as best we can.
Okay, all right. Like plan review it is then.
Okay, I just, just to be clear though, and, and, you know, I, I like to not make it a habit of just reviewing things because people are asking us to that don't make sense with the ordinance. We had that happen a few months ago with the covenant issue on a, on a previously approved subdivision. So, you know, that's not always necessary that if somebody asks us to review something, that we have to do what's required by ordinance. And I just want to make sure that in the ordinance on page 46, activities requiring site plan review, we at least have one item on there. That makes the applicant qualify for site plan review. I don't think it does because I think that the, the, the selling of food in a lodging business is part of that business. So if the board members can find an item in section two, one, one, that we can hang our hat on. That's how we'll do it. I just don't see anything there. And it's on page 46 of the land news ordinance.
Well, what would happen if she would just go build the deck and not apply for anything?
She's a violation.
Of, of what though? What, what would the violation be?
Any change to a commercial site requires planning waterproof.
But it's a lodging business. Lodging business includes.
No, no, you're, you're, that now, what if she takes and puts a canopy over that?
What if what?
What happens?
What happens when she puts a canopy over it? I mean, keep the sun off.
It gets shady.
You, you can't, bottom line is you cannot make changes. Why, why did Vikings come to the board and say, we just want to add a twelve-foot paint shed in the back? Like when they've just added the twelve-foot paint shed in the back.
Because they don't want to be commercial site plan approved.
Correct.
Yeah, that's the reason.
If you add something to a commercial site, now, so, but turn that around. If you're not acknowledging who's a commercial site, she comes to me and says, I wanna building, put the deck on. Sound like I can have her put the deck on. Because she's not registered as a commercial site. I don't think you want me to function like that.
Mike, we could do this by the application. The application is asking us to approve the food being prepared and passed through the window to the deck division. But in order to approve that, we have to approve the entire commercial site.
Right.
So we can do it one way or the other. We can approve the commercial site and include the food, and it's all approved. Or we can take on the application, which has us looking at the food review, and, and that entitles us, requires us to do the commercial site plan review of the entire site. So either way, it's gonna come out an approved commercial site plan. In this case, it'll be with the food passed through a window. Am I wrong, Frank?
Right, right. Well, if, if, if that's what, if that's what we're going to do, then we should let her begin her presentation of, of the project and go through all these items to see what, what else she may need.
Can we agree upfront first for the record that if we do do this process, the, the window, the food preparation attached to the window is part of it?
You have two ways to go. Either it's part of it or immediate, except that it's.
Yeah, okay, right.
What was that, Frank? I didn't.
One at a time.
Oh, sorry. This is Janice. What did you say, Frank?
I said, you can do this one of two ways. You can either go through as it was just proposed and make it part of the, the, the grant, the documented site, or you can go through it as a grandfather's site and just say, now here's an amendment to it. It's gonna be the same thing.
It's much easier just to do the site with food already on.
I think we're all on sync now.
Has there been any, ha- have there been any calls to the town officer inquiries? Are we, is this a public hearing issue with this one?
No.
No?
No, nothing.
Frank, excuse me, I have one more question. You said that if she just came to you to build a deck.
And she's not recorded as a commercial site.
Which she is not at the moment, because we haven't approved this commercial site plan?
Because what?
Because we have not approved anything yet.
Right, well, what, what?
I, I don't quite understand. I heard you say that if she came to you for a permit to build a small deck, you would approve that.
That's correct. I'm saying theoretically, because she's not a business of record, then I can issue a building permit. And I don't think, I don't think you want me to function that way with these sites, even though they're not registered as, as a commercial site. So the best way to do it is with the board is outlet like we're coming up agreement on, is let's run through the submissions and make the approval for everything. And it'll be done in ten minutes.
And how many, how many meetings are we gonna do this in?
Okay.
All right, well, that, if that's the case, we'll let, um, we'll let Alice present the, the project.
Okay, so, um, you know, basically, uh, hopefully you have the copies in front of you, um, and, you know, it is simply a matter of getting the commercial site plan that I had drawn for me by Gartley Endorsky. Um, that was originally drawn in two thousand fifteen. I had it amended this spring to reflect some of the landscaping changes that have happened to the property. And I would like the record to show that this is the current state of the business. Um, and I believe, you know, most of the structures were built either in the nineteen fifties or in the mid eighties. I have not added any buildings to it, um, and would like the town of Lincolnville to recognize it as a commercial site, so that going forward in the future, it will be a seamless process to, you know, make, make other changes. I can have a small meeting with Frank instead of, you know, involving any of you, hopefully.
You can't come in my office anyway, though.
Well, someday.
Someday.
So on the, on the application package, I, we have part one, I notice on one of the applications. And what is, what is part one for the, the grandfathered site?
Yes, part, part one is, is, part one is addressing the grandfathered site. So my understanding was to, to put it into two separate parts. One, to gain the recognition of the existing site for the record. And part two was to discuss the change in use from taking it from a lodging to a food service business. So part one is simply recognizing what's already there, only because it has never been officially recognized before.
Okay.
Frank, have you classified this project?
Uh, yes, it's a major project that covers over five thousand square feet.
Have the butters been notified that we, um?
No, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have been notified, not yet. If the planning, if the planning board decides that they need, normally, you don't send a notification to your butters with a grandfathered plant, uh, site, because everyone knows it's there and what they do. So nothing is changing from what the neighbors have known since nineteen fifty.
So the, so what you're considering, the change of use isn't, isn't a change, then? So we don't have to notify?
No, when you come to that change of use, then the board has to say, is this significant enough to notify the world?
I get along really well with many of ours.
Um, Frank, one question on her proposal number two, commercial site plan review. It says, construction requirements. A new six by eight pressure-treated deck would be built to connect with current deck. This deck will be built in an area that was previously covered by decking until twenty sixteen. So.
They cut the deck off for convenience for the work that they do. They had plumbing that they had to get in through. And they took the deck off at that point. In reality, what you just read, if, if she could have taken and rebuilt the same deck, the same size without a permit. So basically, the deck has nothing to do with what the change is, the amendment is, she's asking. But she happened to point out that the deck is gonna be there, that it's not there at this moment.
I see. Well, if that's what she wants to do, then we could do it. Should I make a?
Janice, do you understand the advantages of doing what we're doing to, to her? She will have an approved.
Wants it.
Site, that, that enhances the.
Necessary, but if that's what she wants, then we should be all legal for her and do it. But I, 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 I don't think it's necessary. It's like Mike was saying, in a way, it's a part of the lodging business. However, who knows? She might become very popular, and there will be cars lined up to get to her window. That's what you're saying, Frank.
Janet, you are correct. She does not have to come before the boards. She wants to come before the board to become documented.
Okay, I thought she was just being, you know, a citizen.
I, I thought, I thought this was a, a requirement for me to do in order to make any changes for, for the business. Um, it's always been my understanding that this was a necessary step to do so. So, um, you know, I, you know, wanna respect all of your time and everything, but I, it's been my understanding that, you know, as, you know, to, you know, document the business and to make sure that I'm doing the right thing, instead of, you know, opening some, you know, pop-up restaurant or something like that, that's going to disrupt the community in any way. I mean, I, I don't want to do that. I wanna make sure that, you know, I am doing the right thing.
Janice, look at it this way. Suppose she does not go through this commercial site plan review approval now. And next week, she decides to add on another bedroom. Now, gotta come before the board, and every time she wants to do something, she can't do it unless she goes, and now she's, she's prepared. She's like an athlete, ready to go. If you stop her now, it's gonna really slow her down.
Right.
That's the advantage. Janice, you have a commercial site plan approval for your business in a, in a center. If you wanna put something on the back of your building now, all you have to do is come and get an amendment to that approved plan. And I think that's what Alice is for. Plus, the resale value of her business is increased, because she has an approved commercial site plan.
Correct.
Okay.
So we have thirty days to, to make the formal review, and we have to do it within sixty days. The butters still need to be notified in writing, if we're, if it's, if it's major site plan review. Is that correct?
No.
And we can't, we can't approve this this evening.
You're right, Ken. It's, it's, again, the whole town knows about the Lincolnville motel. They know what it does. They know when it's open and everything else. It's no different to the Vikings. You did the same thing with the Vikings. You didn't, you didn't have them put in latitude and longitude on the lines, and they didn't have it. Because it's as-is. That's the key word. Here's, here's a fault we have. There is not one sentence in the, in the land use ordinance that says anything about grandfathered commercial site plans. So it boils, a common sense approach happens. Uh, let me put it this way. Say you send it up to the butters, and twenty of butters show up. What are you gonna say to them? You're gonna explain to them the fact, well, they rent rooms for people, and they're not here in the wintertime? They already know what's happening.
Yeah, that's.
This, this is where the board.
We still have to, we still have to go through the checklist in the ordinance.
Yes.
Do, if we're gonna prove it.
This is one of those rare cases, the board, you've got the latitude, because nothing is there to make a common sense decision. Yes, you, well, that's why it says in the, the, uh, the addendum, the, the, uh, it says you should go through all of the submission requirements, and that tells the whole world. It'll be documented, this is what that commercial site plan is, as it exists. You could, if you, if you decide you wanna go the long, you could do it. There's, there's nothing that says you can't. There's also nothing that says you can't take this, and you go through a single meeting, and it's approved.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm getting lost here, because I, I'm, what I'm hearing is, Frank, you're asking the board to approve a commercial site plan without going through the commercial site plan review process?
Jay, I said you go through the submission requirements, so that the board knows what's there. If, if she tells you that, that she's got a septic system that's undersized, are, are you gonna say if you're gonna fix this, was, what's grandfathered, if not failing?
Well, if, if we're reviewing it, we would have to, yes. If we're gonna review this, we're gonna review it.
Well, can, but can we do it?
I see. Now, what you're doing, you're doing it differently than you did Viking lumber. You're doing it differently than what you did to the little red, uh, yellow building down on, on Crow Hawk. All right, now you're going back to doing it a different way. You have that latitude, because there's nothing in the ordinance that describes it.
What was the product you used at the little yellow house at the beach, Frank?
Exact same thing. You, you just went through to see what the submission requirements for, was what is there now?
Yeah, but we went through the complete commercial site plan review process and doing so.
All you did was review the submissions, and then you went and reviewed according to what the, the addendum was, the amendment was. You reviewed that differently, because that was the change to what was there. And then you made a decision. Was this big enough to notify the butters? You did not notify the butters.
Well, I think that's something we have to do, though.
That's your call.
By ordinance. I mean, by ordinance, we have to do that. I think we need to go through the submission requirements, see, see if everything's been submitted.
Well.
Then we.
How, Mike?
Then we make sure she's contacted the butters. We see if there's any feedback.
Well, you have to give, well, not limit to put the cart with the horse. Before she sent the letter to the butters, the board has to decide, all right, is this a complete application? Okay, through all the submission requirements, as if she was the one that was done in the first place. Now, once you're satisfied that's done, now you gotta notify the newspaper and the butters, but you have to establish the date, that's at least two meetings out. Because you need time for the newspaper, you need time for the notifications. You have to, if you're gonna do it like a site plan, you can't do any more tonight, then say it's complete, and that's it. You don't vote on anything.
That's right, yeah, that's right. And, and that's what, that's what you and the applicant wanna do, so that's what we'll do.
I don't think I said that.
No.
Well, that's what you're telling us, we have to do it.
Go ahead.
Well, what you're saying, Frank, is everything is all here tonight. We've got it in front of us.
There's nothing, there, there's no way she cannot satisfy the entire submission requirements.
Right.
So, there's nothing in there that is not correct.
So we could make a motion to accept this, and then she could contact the butters?
Well, then the board's gonna decide, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna do a site walk, we're gonna notify the newspaper, the butters. This is gonna be, you're gonna take this as if it was a brand-new commercial site.
Which it is not.
Which it is not.
Right.
So, let's get started on the approval, if it's complete. Yeah, the submission.
All right, is the board okay with all this now? We'll go through the submission requirements?
Frank, can I ask Frank a question?
No.
Call me out here, Frank, come on. Frank, what about two point one point one?
Oh, no.
Okay, I, I'm glad you brought that up, because that is your sweetheart that you developed when you were on top. And what you and I agreed on, the only way you could possibly use two point one point one, and the town attorney went through this as well, is that you have to have a segue in the ordinance to introduce that, and it's not there. Remember, we talked about that?
So if we can't use two point one point one, what's the alternative?
You don't ask me.
Can I make a motion?
You, you, Jay, again, the applicant is requesting this approval. Well, two point one point one would not even apply, because they, even if it did apply, they want it.
I agree with you, but the answer to my question about what's the alternative is a complete review of the application.
The, the alternative is to review what's there, and say, it's a complete commercial site, period. Everyone knows what it is.
So.
Let me, let me read seven point three point one. As soon as the board determines that the application is complete, the board shall notify the applicant in writing of this finding, meet the notification requirements of subsection K below, and shall place the item on the agenda for substantive review within thirty days.
When our grandfathers wrote that ordinance.
Where is grandfathered in here? I don't find grandfathered in the ordinance.
But the grants, let me finish. When, when you wrote this, this way back, you wrote this as I'm going through this, this part of the ordinance with the idea that someone is coming before us, and they have a commercial site, they'd like to have it recognized and approved. You did not, you did not anticipate that somebody would be so crazy as to say, I wanna take my functioning commercial site and, and have you guys review it and approve it. It's not there, Jay.
But that's what she was doing.
As a grandfathered site, she's not a new site. She didn't, this is nineteen fifty. This is not a new site. You guys are looking at this, some of you are, as if.
Make a motion, Frank.
I'm gonna get this out of my.
Approve this commercial site plan review application. Can we make a motion at this point?
You guys can do anything you want because the wording is not there for an existing commercial site, and that's what you,
Gone.
You guys are ignoring,
I don't think we can just vote to approve this now. Is that, is that the motion you're making?
Why? Why not? This, this is all here. Look at what she's done. Why can't we approve it and then let her contact the abutters and go through the one through thirty, whatever thing?
Mister, Matt, Mister Chair, can I make a request?
Yes.
Would, would the board take a vote as to which way you want to go that this goes?
Yes.
We do a lot. But you, we've spent almost an hour, and we haven't even started.
Well, it's, it's a, it's an odd application to, to go through site plan review on something that's already been there. We shouldn't be doing that in the first place. But what are, what are the board's feelings on this application? What, what does each member want to do here?
I would like to help this woman get what she wants and approve this review application as it is, and go from there.
Okay, Jay?
If we do that, we have to review it under the commercial site plan ordinance.
That's correct. How would you like to proceed then, Jay?
I think it, I think it behooves us to do it the way it's outlined in the ordinance. And if we, if we call this a quote-unquote grandfathered site because it's there, and we don't review it, then it's not a legally binding planning board approval of the site. That's my opinion.
Okay. Sandy, what are your feelings?
I would, yeah, I, I agree with Jay. I, I think we ought to go through the process.
Full site plan review.
It's much to the benefit of Alice, and if she wants to put in a used car lot next door five years from now, it's, it's an approved plan.
And, and Scott, what, what are your feelings?
Um, I, I think that we've overcomplicated it, but I said, we'll have to go through the, uh, through the site plan process uh, just because that's what the, the applicant wants.
Okay, well, it's, and my feelings, of course, were that, that, that the use of serving the food is already covered under lodging, so it, it sounds as if most of you want to treat it as a, as a full site plan, uh, application.
Oh, I, I,
No, I don't, I don't.
No, I said most, not all.
That's beyond what we do.
I think we should let Frank speak some more about this.
No, 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 no.
I mean, what he's trying to tell is that we're, we're doing overkill.
I, I appreciate it, yes. It, it, no, it's, it is an overkill, and I guess I want to say that the, this has already been established in the past. We set a precedence. I've been, I've been in the town thirteen years, and every time we had a grandfathered site come up, we approved it by going through the submission process. It did not go through the whole process.
It did not what?
It did not go through the whole commercial site plan review.
And that's how I feel.
What were the examples of that, Frank?
Viking lumber? The little yellow building across from the lobster pound?
That was through the complete commercial site review.
No.
Little yellow building.
Well, I, I, I,
The little yellow building, Frank, was the thing that got us started on doing two point one point one. It's what got us going on, I'd say it was, and why we needed two point one point one. Because a lady just asked for a counter to be installed if she could serve food, and we had to do a complete commercial site review because of it.
Well, okay, like I said, I, I, I hear the board, the board feels that they're committed by ordinance that they have to go through this. I disagree with it, so you've, take a vote on it if you want to.
Well, I'll entertain a, a, you know, a motion from anyone at this point on how to proceed.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So, just, just to clarify, because, you know, I really tried to go about this the best way possible and didn't want to make things complicated and thought it was relatively simple to get something that's already in existence approved by, but it's basically just acknowledging what's already here in order for me to try to do this, and I will respect your decision and, you know, whatever process you need to do in order to have it be legally blind, binding, and to set the right precedent. Um, but from the perspective of my business, if this is, you know, a sixty-plus-day review plan,
Exactly.
It doesn't, it doesn't help at all, um, so much. So I would request that, you know, given, given the timeline, given the circumstances, I did initially, was initially scheduled to present to the board on March twenty-fifth, um, because I was trying to allow for enough time to do this. And, you know, I'm allowed to open my business as a lodging establishment on June first. Obviously, between this part and the state part, it will take additional time to make sure I have all of the permitting in place to do it. And, you know, all, all I'm asking is to try and, you know, do what I need to do and not, you know, not break any laws and not do anything wrong. And I understand that you have a role that, you know, requires you to make sure that, you know, this doesn't establish the wrong thing, but because this business has been here for many years, and what I'm presenting is something that is in existence, um, I would hope that there might be a way to expedite that process.
There is, there is. I have a perfect solution. Okay, first of all, uh, if you walk out of the door right now, or you're in the room, okay, and you proceed with your business and, and you take and put food out the window, is anyone on the board, you going to expect me to go down and issue a violation letter to her?
No.
No. Not one of you, are they? So, I'm going to say to the applicant, if this is going to affect her livelihood and her income, and you're saying she doesn't have to be here, Alice, I'd say have a great night. Now, it makes sense you're going to put her through the whole process. She doesn't have to be here. You can still keep her in the business. Why would you have to put her through the process if she doesn't have to be here?
True, because she made the application and is requesting it.
Right, I think she's going to withdraw that request.
Well,
I,
it would make, it would make sense because I, with the, with the timing of it all, and the summer's right here, I mean,
Here's my suggestion. I would, I would respectfully request that the applicant withdraws the application, then I will get in touch with the town attorney.
There you go.
Okay. Is what you're requesting, because you're, I hear confusion. I hear four different readings by the ordinance. So, Alice, do you like that idea?
If that works for you, then, um, I'm, I'm happy to do it. Again, you know, I, I've only put this ahead because I thought that was the stuff I needed to, and you don't, and you don't, then I will, you know, work on menu planning instead.
And you don't exist, so if you want to put food out your window, nobody's going to say a word.
Okay.
I, I agree with you, Frank, and if she, she did have this for the board meeting back in March, I do remember reading it.
I, I would suggest that she not withdraw the application because that's going to have to cause her to pay for reapplying. We just table this until we get a reply from the town attorney as to what we've been discussing.
It's your call, Alice.
Well, she could,
We can table the application till the attorney looks at it and advises us how to proceed. But in the meantime, she will be able to get started on getting herself set up to serve the food for the summer months coming.
I, I'd be happy to table the application. I, man, I think that, you know, in the greater picture of things, it would be wonderful, just as a business, to have the site plan be on record, um, because it's been here for so long, and it could make things easier going forward, but there's no need to unnecessarily complicate things, and, um, if it is not a necessary step in terms of trying to do the business that I want to do, then I'm happy to review it at a later date, absolutely.
Can I make another suggestion?
Sure.
I would suggest that the board consider doing a, um, a consideration of allowing her to proceed with the building of the eight-by-six-foot deck and the preparation of food and passing it through the window to that deck conditional on our retaking up of the application and moving it forward through a process that the attorney is applicable.
You can't do that. How can you approve something that doesn't?
Yeah, I think we should just let her withdraw at this point.
I think, Frank, give her the permit for the deck, and we forget this until she comes back.
As I said, she doesn't need one because it's the deck.
Oh, that's right, that's right. She doesn't even need it.
It's better.
Okay, Alice, go get your deck and open.
Thank you.
I'll talk to you tomorrow, Alice.
Thank you, Alice. We'll, uh, we'll table the application.
For, for all of your time and your consideration. Have a good night.
You too. Good night, Alice.
Good night.
You done with me?
Oh, we're just getting started with you, Frank.
Oh, but it's past my bedtime.
Now, we have, we have the, the next item is the, um, minor revision to the major subdivision. Uh, Mr. Case, David, is Mr. Case?
Yes, now, if you read the ordinance, it, it's, this is a two-part application, and, and, uh, what it's looking at, it deals with the performance guarantee, and he wants to make a proposal to the board for your approval. But before you get that, so far as review, the revision, it says if a minor lot lines can be approved without final plan approval on a revision to a plan, so it, it is, what there was intended there is that an application could be twenty-five years old, and because the original owner tries to move a line on that subdivision, the state law says he has to come back before the board go all the way through forty-four. Unless, unless, which is, would mean go through the final plan approval, unless it's, and this is a judgment call, if moving that lot line is really not going to affect phosphorus movement, water, septic, the whole nine yards, so that, that's up to you guys, and you have the, you have the, the flat plan, and I believe Steve is going to hold it up. So that's what you have, those two things.
I'm so dark down here. I've got tons of light on, but my,
Got to pay the light bills, Steve.
You have a light on. I've got an overhead light on and, and this light, I don't know why it's not lit up.
We can see it. This is okay, Steve.
It's all right.
I know. I don't know what's wrong.
Can you hear us okay, Steve?
Yeah, I can hear you and see everybody. I've been watching, watching the whole, uh, meeting.
So, again, we're, we're, just so everyone knows, this is a subdivision that was approved on March eleventh, twenty twenty. The plan, it's the original subdivision plan, uh, has already been recorded, uh, Plan Book twenty-four, page sixty-four. He's asking to move, I think there are two lines on this plan that are being moved. It's a, it's a very minor change. If we approve that, this plan will also be recorded. The registrar will have to, um, make note on the previous plan. All right, the only thing that I saw was our ordinance requires it somewhere on the plan. He notes that it's revising the original one, and when he gets those plans to us for signature, he can have the surveyor change that and, should be all set. But the board members have to decide whether or not the, the, uh, the revision of these two lines uh, is going to require us to go through all the findings of fact and, uh, whether it's, like Frank said, whether it's going to change drainage, whether it's going to change, uh, any of the things that were reviewed in the original application. If you could show the, the board members those lines, Steve, um, in case somebody doesn't have his or her plan with them.
Yeah.
Hang on, let me.
I, I wasn't able to determine what was being changed with the stuff I have.
Um, this is the upper lot where, this is my, my house up here, and with this lot line, this pond, um, the original lot line went through the corner of the pond and was going to create an issue with, uh, the pond dumping out through this lot and easement, so all I did was move the lot line downhill a little bit to take out the whole pond situation off the lot. So it's still plenty of square footage and, uh, really hasn't changed anything as far as what you were talking about phosphorus and all that. It's still the same layout. And, um, this other lot, Lot E, let me see, I'm looking at the camera now, okay. This, this lot here, the line, here's the new line, uh, I want to move it to, but the line used to go down here, made this lot smaller. I'm just making it, I'm splitting them up, making them so it's only one house possibly for each one, like this one was big enough to put two on it. I don't want that. I want just one house site.
I like that better.
Yeah, so I just moved the line back and, and they're both one house, one house site, so it's just, it's still the same exact layout, just moving this line, whatever it was, fifty feet or whatever it was.
I made a motion that we approve Steve Case's changes to his lots.
I would second that, if we can.
Who seconded that?
Scott.
Moved by Janice. Was it seconded?
Seconded by Scott.
It was seconded by Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion, I just want to read, and I, I agree with you, but I just want to read one thing. In our own ordinance, and we should decide this as well. Um, in nine-one-two revisions to approved plans, if the board determines that the revision or amendment in the previously approved plan involves only a minor adjustment of boundary lines for a lot or lots, and the board may at its discretion decide to approve the revision or amendment without requiring the procedures for preliminary plan approval or final plan approval. So we, we as a board should decide that before we approve this. Um, and it seems like most people are in agreement that these revisions are minor. So I think before we vote to approve the plan, we need to vote on that. And the only other item that I think Steve is going to want to take care of on the plan before we, we'll end up going to the town office to sign these, uh, in nine-two on submissions, the revised plan, which is what he's presenting, shall indicate uh, that it is a revision of the previously approved and recorded plan. That should be on that plan somewhere. And show the title of the subdivision and the book and page or cabinet and sheet on which the original plan is recorded at the Waldo County Registry of Deeds. So even though the registrar takes care of that, that should, there are two items that should be on the plan. And he, I, I think, uh, we should also vote that he revise that. So when he brings them in for signature, it, it'll be ready to go.
I would request, I would request that Janice, uh, change her, um, motion to say that the approval should be under nine point one point two of the ordinance.
Okay, I'm set.
Okay, Janice's moved that the plan be approved under nine, uh, nine-one, uh, two.
Nice second.
It's been moved and said, it's been seconded by Scott Harrison. It's been moved by Janice Kay. Um, is there any other discussion?
I, I have a quick question for you, Mike.
Yes, Steve.
You want the plan to just, uh, to notate on, on, on the revised plan that you're changing the plan with the new book and page that was recorded?
Yes, the ordinance says it should, um, it should say that it's a revision of that original plan, and that the original plan is recorded in, um,
Yeah, it's a new number, new book and page.
I think Joe would be able to look it up. I'm pretty sure it's, uh, Plan Book twenty-four, page sixty-four. That should be noted on the plan somewhere.
Right.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Um, Chairman Mike Cummins votes to approve the, uh, revision to the plan. Uh, Jay Foster?
Approved.
Sandy Delano?
Approved.
Scott Harrison?
Approved.
Janice Kay?
Approved.
It's been a, it's a move, it's been moved and approved. Uh, there are no nays. Uh, the revision to the subdivision plan is approved.
Okay. So, um, I guess my other, um, question was about the, um, the S, uh, putting an escrow about the, uh, leaving the road and binder.
Excuse me, Steve, hang it up one second.
Yeah.
Mike, you're going to have to have all the board members sign those flat plans.
Okay, can you, can you let us know or have, uh, Melissa email us when those plans come in?
Okay, you, you have them, I believe.
Yeah, but he's going to, he's going to bring revised plans.
Okay.
Is the town office open?
Uh, no.
Next week.
We pick it up.
Next week it will be. Yeah.
So, should we come there individually and sign, Frank?
Yeah, I will call everybody up when it comes in, then we could, but Mike has to sign it first as the chair.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, Mike, Steve.
Yeah, you can continue, Stephen.
Um, I know last time we met and we, we, Um, I know last time we met and we 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 spoke about, um, you know, the roads approved. And I was hoping to uh just, when I get the road into a uh, the binder goes down to uh be able to start selling lots or constructing houses without the final code on. And uh and I know you, everybody has reservations because of stuff that's already happened in town. And I went over uh, you know, Article thirteen on the performance guarantees. And I had my attorney uh uh draw up an escrow agreement. And so I I uh Frank, does everybody have a copy of that escrow agreement?
Yes, they should have.
Yes.
I can't believe it.
And and I sent you a copy of of one of the paver's prices, so um, you know, at that price, um, the finished coat is about twenty-eight percent of the total contract. And I put like thirty-nine percent aside for the final contract, you know, accounting for changes of cost. And I was hoping to get, you know, like four years. If I put the money in an escrow account, it'd give me four years to get as much of the heavy work done as possible before I I do the final paving.
Yeah, I think I think at the last meeting when we approved the plan, it kinda came up last minute.
Right.
And even though most, I I think, I may I'll speak for myself, I thought it was a good idea that to hold off on the final code as long as we, the top code, as long as we made provisions that the funds would be there and no future lot owner would ever be uh caught with, you know, the improvements not being completed in a in a subdivision lot that they had purchased. Uh, the the planning board is able to um to approve that request, but the specifics um are something that would have to be ironed out. You would submit to the uh the town manager and he would make sure the selectmen and the town attorney go over that information and get it set up for you, so you will be able to do that. So the the board can, the board can vote on that, but the specific, and it would be all contingent upon um the the selectmen and the attorney reviewing it.
Okay.
Can I ask what um, can I ask Steve um exactly, is it, what is your plan and what is your timeframe for development of this subdivision?
Well, I'm uh actually gonna be starting, I'm putting uh, you know, some of the piping in next week. And then uh once I do that, then it's all the underground uh conduit. I got CMP permit from them to run down all the electrical down and run it across the street. Then after that, then I have to have Frank come. We're gonna do test holes in the existing road to see how close it is and how much gravel we have to bring in to bring it up to spec.
And then you wanna put the uh.
Yeah, then the binder will go. So I'm looking, the way that's going, I mean, just speaking about piping and conduit, it sounds like a couple of days, but it's really a month or so. It's worth the work.
And then you plan on selling lots?
Yeah, I'm gonna try sell some lots, but I, you know, I I'll have to wait to uh um, you know, get the road up to speed. You know, if I get all the gravel in and then I'm, all I have to do is put the binder in, then it'd be looking pretty nice at that point anyway. But it's talking July, August before I can do that, I figure.
So you would be able to sell the lots without putting that top coat on and spare the top coat from damage.
Getting marked up on me. You can only be so careful and 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 trucks coming in. I'd rather, if I can do it, that three or four-year window. Um, and then plus, you don't know what with this Corona thing going on, but it's creating two different uh situations. Uh, there's a lot of uh real estate activity because of it. People trying to um get away from crowded areas or it's saying, okay, I'm sixty-five years old. I've had enough. I'm gonna move where I wanna live, you know. So it's really uh uh different people I spoke with say there's like a bidding wars going on in Portland over property right now because of that.
Steve, you requested four years. Is that gonna be adequate and based upon the concerns of what's coming in with this coronavirus?
You know, it's it's really up in the air. I, you know, I'm taking a guess. You know, four to six years, but um, you know, like what you're saying, I'd like to get it done myself. So I, you know, but it takes time, you know, the process of building a house is at least a year. So um even if you had multiple houses going on, you you're talking at least four years, four to six, I'd say.
Okay, cuz what you're what you're asking us to submit up the chain, you requested a four-years period.
Yeah, four years, yeah.
What, you wanna keep that wording?
Does anyone, do any board members have a problem with that?
Um, a comment. Um, me, uh, I agree with this. I think it makes sense. And Frank would say it makes common sense. I I I get all that. But somebody is gonna have to guide me around fifteen-point-two-point-five. Um, that's on page eighty-two of the ordinance. Unless we figure out what to do about that, um, I'm kind of flummoxed by it.
Uh, could you, which section was it again, Jay?
Fifteen-point-two-point-five says no lot in a subdivision may be sold, leased, or otherwise conveyed before the street upon which the lot fronts is completed in accordance with the ordinance.
Well, completed in accordance with the ordinance, uh, it's talking about that he would have the road completed with the first coat. Semantics.
I agree with that, Frank, but is that completed by the ordinance?
Well, does it say it's not?
I know, that's that's my problem. If anybody can guide me around that, I don't have a problem with it. But it's there. I don't think the board can ignore it. Um, and if we approve just the base coat and then selling of the lots, then we're going against our own ordinance. That's why I asked Mike, I mean, yeah, um, if it, not Mike, but if his if his plan was to do the work on the road and then sell lots, if his plan is to sell lots, then I have a problem with it.
When would you have the first coat on, Steve? Up front?
Say say that again?
When would the fir- the pri- the first coat be put on?
Uh, the binder coat? Pro- pro- July, August, I would think, some sometime in that time, July, August.
That's two inches, right?
Yeah, two inches, yeah.
Well, therefore, that I I would have Nancy documenting the fact that uh the board, if you approve, prove that the board has approved the escrow predicated on a two-inch coat as a brought the 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 initial coating and allow the sale of sale of houses with the request in place before the town attorney, et cetera, that he has up to four years to put on the final coat.
And what about lots? Can he sell them?
Well, if you look at um, if you look at thirteen-one-four, um, it talks about an offer of a conditional approval limiting the number of units built or lots sold until all the improvements have been constructed. So if he's able to make that offer to us, uh, the conditions and amount of the performance guarantee shall be determined by the board uh with advice of the town administrator, selectman, road commissioner, and or attorney. So the the ordinance kinda works against itself here. It says you can you you can stage it, but then again, it says you can't sell any lots, so.
So if he has a conditional agreement, he he can't sell lots until the road is complete. If he wants to have a an escrow account uh performance guarantee, he can do that, but he has to have the road completed by the ordinance. So to me, that's.
Then why did, why put up the bond and then I'll just finish the road? If you're not, if 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 you're saying finishing the road with a final coat, then I won't even have to do the agreement, do it and.
Right.
Right, yeah.
I mean, that's, I'm, the only thing I'm hung up on is fifteen-point-two-point-five. If we can get around that, I'm fine with it. No problem.
That's that's what Mike was sharing you two, going back to thirteen-point-two.
What prevents him from doing a partial uh improvement up to the first lot? And do the others as they come through?
What, that's what he wants to do is he wants to do a partial all the way up.
You do the whole pavement all the way up, the whole length of the road. On the binder coat, like, like you see in that big subdivision across from Vikings, same thing.
Right, you may sell, you may sell the lot next to your house first, in that which case, you know, you're not gonna sell them in the order from Route One, so.
Yeah, no, I don't know. I don't know what's gonna happen, to tell you the truth.
To the best of my knowledge, from what I can remember, um Deer Meadows, Harbor Point, both of uh Wayne Lamont, um Wayne Lonnie Landing subdivisions and a couple others I can think of. Once they were approved, they were approved with the road complete, then the lots were sold. What we're being asked here is to do um something that is is makes sense. I get it. But I have that provision in the ordinance that says until the road is complete, the lots can't be sold.
Oh, I have a question for Steve. So Steve, could you put this second coat on after the binder coat just up to that lot? I think it's D or E, but there's your your lot and then there's the lot you wanna sell first. What if?
Yeah, to me, no, you'd have to do the either, either gonna grant the agreement or or not. And then, cuz there's no way of doing it, once you prep the whole road and all the pipings in, all the gravel's in, ready to go. And then you you do the binder coat, the crew's there, you could do the finish coat and then you just have to, you know.
Oh, because she, the second coat has to be done all at once. You can't.
No, no, you can, that's what I'm saying, is you're gonna do the second coat later. And 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 the binder coat is what carries all the weight anyway. That's the, it's most of the weight-bearing load is at two inches, so. Uh, but then you can uh do all the heavy work and then minimize any gouges or scratches in the pavement and then.
Well, I I, okay, I I don't understand why we can't let him sell the lot if he puts the binder coat on and it's sufficient.
Fifteen-point-two-point-five.
Okay, so what can we do about that, Frank? Get rid of that?
My suggestion is this, Jay is seeing one thing that's definite stop. Mike is seeing a a definite way that can go around it. My recommendation is that Mike, take this to the town attorney and get her reading on it because this is a legal interpretation. And the board doesn't feel comfortable with it, they're doing it. So have it and write it to the town attorney and then we're covered.
And what's presented to the town attorney should be Steve's agreement that he's had drafted, our ordinance, and then her opinion.
Right.
That's that's the second part. First part is he wants to be able to proceed before that is all done because you're saying it has to all be done. And and Mike is saying, no, this is.
Mike, it's not me, it's the ordinance.
My apologies.
Yeah, the I'm. The ordinance mentions the road having, the ordinance mentions the road having to be done before the lots can be sold. Um, another section of the ordinance mentions staging of improvement, so.
Right.
I would say we, if we gave him conditional, um, you know, with contingencies, if the attorney come up with something that would be able to, it's it's, we wouldn't be at fault. It would be, you know, the.
Right.
The attorney would have to approve it.
Steve, the other option would be for you to take a conditional agreement as opposed to an escrow account for a performance guarantee and then do the final coat, go ahead and sell your lots and then repair the road if it were damaged. You're making a assumption it's gonna tear the road up uh if you do that, but you you can consider that also.
But Jay, the reason why he's doing that is because he needs the money from the sale of one of the houses.
If he had a conditional agreement, if he had a conditional agreement, he wouldn't have to put any money in an escrow account.
Conditional agreement from whom?
Conditional agreement from the planning board. It's a it's a performance guarantee. There's four different performance guarantees. One of them is a conditional agreement. He finishes the road, he can do anything he wants.
So Frank, can we do that? Give him a conditional agreement so he doesn't have to?
Then he can't sell lots until he finishes the road.
Right. Jay's taking that right out of the ordinance.
Oh.
Janice, we have to go by the ordinance.
Exactly, just cuz something doesn't sound right or doesn't make sense to us, doesn't mean that we can totally ignore the ordinance. We've gotta go by the ordinance, whether we like it or not, so.
Exactly.
Right.
So, so you guys can vote on it, but but like I said, Mike, you should talk to Sally.
Steve, your thoughts on it?
Uh, my thoughts, uh, my thoughts are what uh you you already mentioned, Mike, is it is is you give it to uh, you know, your attorney and and show him my escrow agreement and that, but they're also gonna bring up what Jay's talking about and then what you're talking about. So you got the the Article fifteen and then Article thirteen kinda gives you a loop, like a, like a space where you could move it to, that gives you, to give you uh, you know.
Your your plan, Steve, is to put down the binder coat anyway. You plan on doing that?
Oh, yeah, you gotta do it anyway.
So the results of what we're asking for are gonna be back way before you get to the top coat.
Oh, yeah, I'm I'm months away.
Yeah, we're fine in doing that.
So.
You said July or August, right?
Yeah, it's July, August. I mean, I I'll start getting into into it heavy in June, but it takes time. But uh, and Frank will know, cuz I'll be involved with him with the gravel and stuff and as we get on with the construction of it, so.
But it's also a good time to put the lots up for sale.
Yeah, but you can't, it's kinda a hard thing. You talk, my sister's a real estate person and it's like, you can't have it looking like a bomb went off in the place with.
Yeah.
Frenches everywhere and holes and pipes and it's kinda good to get the base in and kinda where you can drive in with a vehicle and it's looking good. But at that point, uh, I'll be uh, once the gravel goes down, I I'm not gonna waste any time. Once all the piping is done and then you bring the gravel up up to the the right heights and and uh the pitches and everything, then you'd be ready, ready for the paver.
Right.
So I'll I'll I'll, I won't fool around, have the paver lined up and do it.
Yeah.
Mike, I wanna, I might suggest that the, because this thing makes so much sense, common sense-wise, that we take a look at the ordinance in terms of the binder coat and the base coats for subdivisions in the future and maybe put in some allowance for this sort of thing, because if this is fifteen-point-two-point-five proves to be and holds up, it'll always be restricting us from allowing this kind of thing to happen.
Right, yeah, I I agree with you, Jay. I mean, it's it's kind of standard operating procedure in subdivisions. You hold off on that top coat till everything's done, so you get a nice smooth, you know, finish course.
Makes makes perfect sense, yeah.
Right.
Well, I think we would still, I I think we could grant him uh conditional approval contingent upon attorney and uh review and the selectmen reviewing his proposal as far as dollar amounts and percentage amounts based on his uh estimate of paving. Um, would the board be willing to do that?
I would make a motion to that effect.
I second the motion.
Sandy Delano uh moves that we give the applicant, um, Steve Case, uh, conditional approval contingent upon uh attorney review and selectman review. Um, and it was seconded by Janice K. Is there, is there any other conversation?
Yeah, a question for Frank. Um, when we have an escrow account open to the amount that we're um saying that we're gonna need it in the name of the town, does that have to go to the select board?
Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to check that out. I use, it should be under, let me put it this way, the SLIGHT Board controls the finances of the town. So I don't know if that would fall underneath that or that would still be under the purview of the the chair of the planning board. Because who's gonna make the decision of default? It's probably gonna be the planning board, cuz they're the ones that are involved in all the technicalities going on. So I'm gonna say it's gonna be the planning board.
Yeah, this, every subdivision I can think of has always been a conditional agreement. They've always agreed to finish and then sell. This is new, so.
Well, I mean, that's what happened with Harbor Point was the same way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, who, it it would be who would be the one to, you know, start the ball rolling on legal action if they didn't live up to the, I I don't think it would be the planning board. I would think it would be the uh the selectmen, but.
Well, it it that would usually come from the people that buy the lots. They're the ones that are gonna be.
They would petition the town first because the 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 town is the one that approved it that way and had the funds set aside, so.
Right, but it go, well, what normally normally happens, they go both ways. They go after the town as well as the contractor.
Right.
Yeah, this doesn't put the town under any liability. He's putting twenty-five thousand dollars in an escrow account, which would allow us to finish that road with a top coat if he were to default. We should, we should always be looking in terms of protecting the town, not necessarily the developer. So if he were to go away, if he were to default and the people that bought lots in that subdivision were to sue the town.
Right.
We want this road finished. We, the town, would be liable, so we don't want that, so.
Right.
All right, but it's it's been moved and seconded. Uh, any other discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Um, I vote the affirmative to approve. Jay?
Approve.
Sandy?
Approve.
Scott?
Approve.
Janice?
Approve.
All right, it's unanimous. All right, it's unanimous. Carried. Um, so you'll make sure you get that information to David Kenny and he'll see that the selectman get it and the attorney gets it then, Steve. Your proposal for the uh escrowing.
Right, Frank, well Frank has.
Frank has copies of it as well.
But I I'll have to get my act together on the plan, he has plans, but I'm not sure if it has. Uh the revised, the new uh book and page on of how that plan was recorded.
Okay.
And I'll make sure I I'll have that information.
And then when I get to the town, the members will come in and sign that, right?
Mike, can I ask Frank a question?
And Mike, you're gonna follow, shut, one sec, uh Jake.
When we present it to the town attorney, can we also ask her if there's a way that the planning board can approve the request under a condition? That the binder coat be put down and using the escrow account if there was a default?
That's what, that's what I'm recommending that Mike does, because that's exactly the.
That's another option, if we can conditionally approve the subdivision.
Right.
With the binder down but not the top coat, then maybe we can go that way, if she, if she agrees.
Yes, yeah, she may suggest that too.
Yeah.
If, well, if we had known that in the initial review, I think it may have ended up that way, we found out about it after the fact.
And Mike, I I think an email might be the better way to go in communicating with her.
Okay.
Yeah, it makes sense, Jay, I think, I think if uh you have a. Ordinance of part of your, your Article thirteen or something in there mentioning it. Because I I've done a few subdivisions in my life and we always done binder. Because when you bring them excavators and trucks and cement trucks in, you know, brand new roads, I don't think you put plywood down on it, they're gonna mark up. You know, on a hot summer day, it's nice to have the binder and then, like you said, when you get done.
Yeah.
You clean up any dents that are, that are in there from anything that happened and then you put the finish coat, it's like brand new, boom.
Steve, you get me around fifteen point two point five, I'm on your side.
Yeah, I understand, you, you have to follow the rules, that, that, that's what you're governing, yeah.
All right, Steve, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll look for your plans.
Good luck. Good night.
Dan, now it is, uh is there any other, any other discussion or anything?
No.
We move, someone want to move to, we have no minutes to review, if someone wants to move to adjourn?
I moved that we adjourned, Scott.
Scott moves that we adjourn. Sandy seconds it. Jay?
Second.
Jay seconds, okay.
Yeah, I already did.
I vote in the affirmative that we adjourn, Jay?
Hey.
Sandy?
Good night, good night.
Scott?
Thank you, Steve.
You have to vote, Janice, yeah. Voting, we adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
It's unanimous. Nancy, do you feel like you have everything?
Yes, I've gone through six pencils.
Okay.
Wow.
We still have twenty minutes, twenty two minutes.
No, I have to eat supper.
I don't like to smell this thing.
All right, well, y'all have a short, safe drive home.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Good night, David.